Director Mark Conrad and Jeff Behrens from the Eagle Gazette and some folks from Interface. And I'm here.
Thank you. And do we have Josh Horacek on the line yet?
I believe Amy Brown Thompson is on the line.
I'm on the line Commissioner, this is Amy Brown Thompson.
Good morning, how are you today?
I'm good.
Good, I appreciate you being with us and I welcome everybody to the meeting. Amy, any update on legal?
It seems kinda silly to say no, because I think we've been living legal updates lately, but nothing that you guys are already aware of. Our office is running, we are working remotely right now, but we're always accessible to anyone that has questions for us. So that was the one message I did want to convey this morning.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, before we get into the main items on the agenda and I turn it over to Carrie for Carrie's list, I want to hear from Commissioner Fix, any opening remarks?
Uh, no, thank you, just, you know, this is, they're interesting times and this is an interesting way to have a meeting.
Yes, it is. Commissioner Levacy, any opening remarks?
No, you know, this is a, this is a new way of going business for me certainly and at least we can continue with county business and look forward to this thing ending sooner than later.
I appreciate everybody being with. If I could, sorry, I just wanted to add, how much I appreciate Carrie and our staff and everybody who's done really a pretty outstanding job of keeping things moving and really being a leader in the state as to how we're dealing with this situation. We're getting recognition from CTO and other counties for the leadership role that we're taking, so just really want to thank Carrie and our staff for all that.
Thank you Commissioner Fix and of course thank you to Carrie and everybody who's tried to keep the ball rolling here. I want to keep the agenda moving and go to Carrie's list.
Okay, I think we first were going to speak a little bit about our responses to the coronavirus and allow John Coaches to give a bit of an update. John, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Go ahead, John. As of today, we just received our update from the hospital. They've tested 143 total, 89 have been negative, there's 53 outstanding. We do have one conflicting information we're trying to track down now, but we'll get back those to the commissioners and Carrie as soon as we get that information clarified. Also today is, I'm actually here with Larry and Tiffany from the Health Department, we're parsing through the SNS stockpile and we will be trying to push that out to our priority groups over the next couple of days.
And so John, 89 and 53 is 142 with 143 tests and one question mark?
One question mark, yes sir.
Alright, any questions from Commissioner Levacy first to John Coaches?
Oh, I have none, thank you.
Commissioner Fix, any questions for John Coaches?
John, is there a sense to, you know, we keep hearing that this is, the tidal wave is coming, is there any sense on your part as to, you know, when we feel like we're going to be deep into this as far as, you know, getting some positive test results and things like that for Fairfield County?
I mean, the only, the only evidence we have of the uprising of the curve is comparing us to previous countries, which is kinda shaky data. I think we are, we are obviously growing daily in our, in our case counts, but we also have a question mark when it comes to testing and its availability. So, I mean, we're definitely on the upswing. Well, I don't feel like we've reached the peak, so I feel like we're probably getting, climbing the hill right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything additional, John, from your report?
No, that's it. I think we're, we're feeling pretty good.
Well, and I appreciate that and I think all the commissioners would appreciate the standing requests for immediate notification of any positive testing.
Yes, yes sir, we will definitely keep you on that. We get an update about this time every day from the hospital.
Okay, thank you, thank you John.
I will add, can I add one more thing? There is a potential possibility that you could see another test from another hospital of a Fairfield County resident and that information I would not have readily available. Grant Ohio Health may test someone, they won't necessarily know to tell, tell us until they have to report it to the Health Department. So, i- if that does happen, I could be out of the loop, just, just so you know.
Understood. And this, out of curiosity under the CDC regulations, will you continue to report negative tests to us?
I, I think the hospital's doing it out of just kinda situational awareness, their only requirement is to alert the Health Department of a positive.
I understand, but you know the CDC has demanded negative testing results.
Yeah, and, and that's why I think they're still, you know, doing that as a, as kind of a tracking mechanism. But yeah, as long as that, they will continue to send them to us.
Okay, John, I appreciate your time and your work.
So we want to-
Carrie, back to you.
Sure, thank you. We want to say, of course, thanks to John and also thanks to Larry Hannah and Tiffany Nash as they continue to provide really good support throughout the community and for all of us in the local government as well. Our plan communicated on March 16th is working well. There have been some stepped up measures by the court and some new judicial orders issued. We are responding well to the order to stay at home. Essential functions are continuing and a copy of that order is in the review packet. In the review packet also is a copy of the request for public assistance. And this particular request relates to the first step that the local government will take in order to obtain disaster assistance from the federal government. We've issued some additional communications to employees. Essential staff have been notified that they are essential. We have a template available for teleworking for those who wish to use that documentation and lay out those expectations from working at home. For the commission, teleworking is in place for some practical purposes and has been in place for some time. Dennis Keller sent out a summary by email about the cleaning supplies. We've shared our cleaning spray and paper towels with others. We're limited on tubs of the Clorox wipes, but we have adequate supplies to do what we need to do. We need to use the spray bottles and cleaners though with the paper towels instead of the wipes for cleaning the hard surfaces. The cleaning by facilities and ServiceMaster continues as expected and there is intensive social distancing in place. The Board of Election workers needed to confirm that they needed access to the county mailroom and we were able to confirm that for them. Operations at the jail are being managed very well. We continue to be supportive to them. We were able to get some thermometers and thermometer strips to be helpful. We've been supporting other departments, agencies and community groups on a regular basis and I know that Todd, McAuliffe, Jeff Fix and Ani Cordell were very helpful to Meals on Wheels and they had some contacts to help with some volunteers. 211 is well prepared, schools are continuing to prepare lunches. DD might contract out that service at some point. Have been working with Veteran Services to make sure that they have what they need for transportation, those critical kinds of transportation for medical services and they do have what they need. And we've been fielding a lot of calls in multiple areas, both internally and externally. We do know that the bench trial for Franklin County has been continued. Like to also point out that Ani Cordell and her team with JFS have been exceptionally organized. They're using technology as much as possible. They know at any time how many of their 220 staff are on site, where they are teleworking, how they're not scheduled to work and how they're providing those essential services using technology. On the screen, you will see now the, what, the link, the, the site that allows an individual to apply, renew or make changes for cash, food or medical assistance. There is the phone number 740-652-7887 to report abuse or neglect. And that is ongoing services, essential services, of course, call 911 for emergencies. And we are very thankful for how the JFS team has been working together and very appreciative of that.
Carrie?
Yes?
Can you just advise us as to what the flow is right now in terms of how, how a person who wants to apply for unemployment, how are they doing that? Is that strictly through the state or is that coming through our local office?
That is strictly through the state and there's both an online application, they do have a telephone. I understand that that particular number is overloaded and there's a very long wait time and sometimes people are cut off from their time. So the best thing to do is to use the online application with the state of Ohio. We can send that out and place it on our webpage, which we'll go through here in a moment. We'll add a link for that on our webpage.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Please continue.
We've been in touch with CCAO and others, several other counties, providing tools or templates or things that might be helpful to others. We're attending teleconferences as we can if they don't conflict with county business. Overall, the schedule is to encourage limited staff in alternate locations, alternate schedules, using technology and employing that very extensive social distancing. And all buildings at this time are closed to the general public. Administrative leave is an option at any time that any appointing authority can take as needed and we do know there are some cases of that happening. HR is providing really good assistance and help for employees. They've reached out multiple times. We are communicating regularly by email. They've provided good information about our health plan and have also provided good information for the future. We are aware that the Families First Coronavirus Response Act was approved and that's effective April 2nd. Initially, it provides for a new type of compensated absence, sick leave at two-thirds of pay, which may not be very relevant for us given that most of us have sick leave balances at present. But it also does give new FMLA access and HR will send out some additional communication on April 2nd. There are drop boxes available at the administrative courthouse, that is a new feature, a new drop box. There's one at JFS, the Government Service Center on Main Street and one on Chestnut Street with our drive-through payment center. Anybody can use that to drop off information and documents to provide to another department. You can still make child support order, child support payments at the Chestnut Street drive-through. And we're just reminding people though to use the US mail for hard deadlines such as the Board of Revision applications because that deadline is March 31st and that postmark prior to March 31st is very important. We did place on our website information to remind people of that. The commission meetings and RPC meetings will be streamed live as they are now. We do have the email comment and the ask a question format that's available there. The website is being updated regularly. The website has all the agendas, minutes and announcements and the press is invited to attend these particular meetings that we are streaming. The website also includes videos and some helpful materials. We just want to point out that we're able to continue our protective services, utilities, critical support services. Those critical support services are law enforcement, the jail, protective services, the courts relating to CPOs particularly, those kinds of emergency hearings, utilities, JFS benefits, payroll services, accounts payable, emergency management, road and bridge emergency services. That kind of administration that keeps those critical essential services going in the public. Veteran services and the care of dogs, those are some examples. All of those things are continuing albeit on a very limited fashion so that we can social distance and make sure that we're trying to do everything we can every day to keep everybody healthy. We're checking in every day.
Thank you. Carrie, Carrie, could you pause for just a moment?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix, any questions up to this point? I'm good, thank you. Commissioner Levacy, any questions with Carrie up to this point?
No, I don't and Carrie and I actually spoke yesterday and on the county commissioners' call in yesterday where we had all the different counties represented. One of the main themes was to have some, to continue with some of the critical services and especially recorder and titles. That was the, the main theme and I heard from that meeting.
Understood, thank you Commissioner. Carrie, please continue.
And we're checking in daily with department heads and elected officials and we're sending out communication to employees daily as well. We just want to thank everybody for their patience as we're innovative and safe and we'll be better for this. But thought it'd be a good opportunity if we could put on the screen the website itself and we could click through that to show the kinds of things that are on our website that are helpful information both for employees and for members of the public. So that's what we're putting on the screen now.
And then Carrie, you and I spoke this morning and at this point, we're not seeing a spike in health insurance claims?
No, we have seen some additional expenditures that began earlier in the year. So we see a bit of a spike, but not necessarily relating to this particular pandemic. We always do in the first quarter, see a little bit more of an increase in the terms of our claims that are being processed.
Okay.
So you can see in the website, you see access to our buildings. If there's more information that one wants to know about what the services are, they can scroll through and see the buildings. Of course, these are closed to the public at this time. We do have a summary of that. That's been tweeted as well. And then here at this summary for the all county owned buildings being closed, you can see the links for the streaming of the meetings, both the commission meetings and RPC. Fairfield Medical Center has updates and we are linking to that. And they last updated this on March 23rd, just yesterday. The higher department of health updates are here. A very good website with a lot of good resources, including the latest developments and some top resources for how people can respond and some stay-at-home information to be helpful to people who are working at home. And then some county-specific information such as just our contact information you see here by each department. And you will also see a number of different communications from the courts, giving some guidance to the bar and to those who would want to read more information about their journal entries. And then you'll also see our resolutions that may be helpful to other counties who might be considering a resolution relating to exempting competitive bidding or the emergency authority. And then we have some suggestions from the federal government of how to keep the workplace, schools and your home safe. And then we have other links here for the have a question and how to email if you do have a question for these meetings. And then we spoke about the Board of Revision reminder, it's here on the website as well.
Carrie, do we have any mechanism by which we have any sense at all as to the site visits to our website?
We do and we can get more information about that with our analytics.
I would just be curious if we've seen any spike in that recently.
We'll check on that. We do know employees are using this and we can, we can review that and see if we're seeing more visits to the website or not. We do tweet-
Thank you, please continue.
We tweet this information and we also have it on Instagram. And then the departments who have Facebook are also sending this information out as well.
Got it, please continue.
Okay, so we have a couple of date reminders, on April 8th, wear blue for child abuse prevention. It's good to maintain our support for departments, especially at a time like this. And on April 10th is Good Friday and we will close at noon.
Any questions, comments or concerns on date reminders from Jeff Fix?
None sir, thank you.
Commissioner Levacy?
None for me, yeah, none for me, thank you.
Alright, back to you Carrie.
In our highlights of resolutions today, we have 30 resolutions for the voting meeting. Two are contracts and one is for a grant agreement. The first contract is for a proposal relating to salt purchasing with a cooperative purchasing program for 2020 and that is for the county engineer, standard business as they proceed through that process. RPC proposes a resolution for a contract with Cooper Concrete Services and a notice of commencement of the same contract for the Village of Pleasantville CDBG Improvement Project. We have talked about this project and it's now at this point and we're happy to see its progress. And then Major Crimes Unit proposes an authorization of a grant agreement. Again, standard process and not unusual at all. We do have 27 financial resolutions of which eight are foundational resolutions. They are debt resolutions and a consolidation resolution for refunding debt and issuing new debt for the Energy Conservation Project Phase 2. This is good for a calendar year. There are eight resolutions and they do not commit the board to any process. It is just foundational so that we are able to proceed if the opportunity is presented in terms of a good market situation.
Will you still have Dennis Schwale on the line?
Yes, I'm here Commissioner.
How are you doing sir?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. Is there any additional information or- Is there any additional information or guidance that you think we should have in advance of the voting pattern as it relates to the refunding resolutions?
Just quickly, I'll mention that these are very similar to other resolutions the board has seen. Basically, it commits, it authorizes the county to issue general obligation bonds in seven cases, in six cases to refund existing debt at a lower rate if the market allows. And the seventh one is to, as Carrie said, fund the Phase II energy conservation measures if they proceed. Then the eighth resolution simply consolidates them into one issue for sale purposes. Other than that, I don't want to take up the board's time with other critical things we have to do, so please ask any questions you might have.
Well, just as Carrie explained, and I want to confirm with you, once we pass these resolutions today, we would best think of these as just table setters, enabling us to move on this at any point within the next calendar year?
That is correct. They authorize the county administrator to, as we say, pull the trigger if the markets improve and the industries are good.
Thank you. Commissioner Fix, any questions for Dennis Schwale?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Levitsy, any questions for Dennis Schwale?
No, not at all. But I do, I do believe this is going to be a good strategy to move forward, because, you know, I truly believe that rates will drop back down in the future.
Yeah, we'll certainly be keeping an eye on it. Thank you, Commissioner. Carrie, back to you.
A fund-to-fund transfer is also proposed today for the appropriations for debt, and three fund-to-fund transfers for the county engineer. All of these next financial resolutions are normal business. We have an account-to-count, transfer of operations to properly classify expenditures for economic and workforce development, four reimbursements by operation of law for JFS, and one for Workforce Investment Opportunity Act, repayment of an advance for the airport-related travel, appropriations for JFS, major crimes, economic and workforce development, that are six resolutions, and none of these are general fund resolutions, a reduction in appropriations at the dog shelter, the Dog and Kennel Fund, and this is based upon restructuring. We revisit that in the third quarter of 2020, but we are able to reduce appropriations, and that is an action we're proposing now, and the payment of bills over $50,000. In Q, there are multiple contracts and financial resolutions, of which we have eight contracts for protective placement and network. And Economic Development is exploring an amendment to the EDA revolving loan fund, and this will better assist businesses during this time. And we are also examining a PRC, a Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Plan Amendment that will allow for better services at this time, too. A language change that will allow for us to use TAN of dollars.
Thank you, Carrie. Commissioner Fix, questions, comments, or concerns on the highlights of resolutions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Levitsy?
The only thing I might say, I think it's, it's very important we keep our focus on economic development. That may sound a little strange at this time, but it's, it's also anything we can do to be helpful for those businesses that are going to struggle through this process.
I agree with you, Commissioner Levitsy, and I don't know specifically the amendment that Mr. Zabrack is looking at, but I would expect that it would be some expansion of our ability to provide some form of short-term assistance or loans to local businesses that we might be able to be helpful to.
Yeah, one more comment, if I may, Mr. President. You know, I think it's, I think it's very good on Rick's part, economic development, to actually be helpful to the restaurants that have carryout potential. And so he actually is broadcasting those, those restaurants that have that ability, and I think that's good, and that could even be possibly expanded.
On the 33.
Thank you, Commissioner. Carrie, back to you.
Yes. On the 33 Alliance website, there are multiple tools that are available for businesses that can be helpful resources. We should pause for a moment, because I received a text from John Coaches. And John, would you like to provide this information about the Health Department's press release that they're working on?
Uh, yeah, they are preparing a press release, so the question mark was, is a positive test result. So that press release will be out very shortly. So I would, I would just ask that everyone hold on that information until the Health Department releases their, their press release.
All right. And then, John, the reason we wanted to be aware of that, and I understand, you know, we'll get the information later, is the community is going to be most interested in that, that any geographic information about that positive test. You know, their, their immediate concerns are going to be, you know, what town were they in, where did they work, is tracing going to be, is tracing still going on with respect to a positive test? Do you know that?
Yeah, so the Health Department will do the contact tracing, starting immediately. Actually, they left as soon as we confirmed. So that will start happening right now. The geographic location will, will not be given. It's a HIPAA violation. It's against the law for them to identify that person's location. The people that were in contact with them will be contacted. It, it's a pretty straightforward process. We, we do realize people get a lot of, there's a lot of press about where is this person? Have I been in contact? But the law is there in place for a reason, to protect that person's rights and privacy. So we'll, we'll contact the people that they were known to be in contact with, and those people will be, will be asked to quarantine until, well, I'll let the Health Department figure out how the quarantine will work, because it changes every day. Yeah.
That's fine, John. We appreciate that update, and we would look forward to whatever information we are permissibly allowed to have when it's available. Back to you, Carrie.
The review packet contains a list of the administrative approvals. If there are any questions, please let me know. There are 11 administrative approvals in the packet. I will highlight one. The emergency protocol was in place last week that allowed for administrative approval relating to the Meals on Wheels allocation being provided to Miller Sports Project for CDBG. You will recall that Meals on Wheels was not able to meet the project deadlines. Miller Sports Project is well underway. We had a hearing about that. There was no one opposed to that action, and all were in favor. So we've already sent the letter to the Ohio Development Services Agency to make that change to the grant agreement, and that letter was dated March 19th, and it is in the review packet as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Please continue.
With Sunshine Week last week, we had seven press releases celebrating Sunshine Week. One, of course, was the recipient of our Entrepreneurial Support Grant that was cultivated, and we are appreciative of that particular project. Several other meetings were canceled, and we had some press releases about that. And we also reminded everybody about the Complete Count for the U.S. Census. And we did a press release about the 33 Alliance, providing information for business during the pandemic. So while there is a pandemic going on, we still have continued our Sunshine Week activities, and we've updated our website and created a new page for the COVID-19 pandemic. And also, on March 5th, we held the Leadership Conference and included a session about public records requests. So we have been able to promote and celebrate Sunshine Week in 2020. With the Complete Count, the U.S. Census, the self-responses began on Monday, technically, and we thank the Complete Count Committee for their work and outreach all throughout Fairfield County. That committee started its work very early, and we've been able to provide some exceptional outreach with partners with utilities, schools, libraries, businesses, churches, nonprofit organizations, and many interested stakeholders. The billboard with NOM and advertising has been very helpful. Thank you for that. Flyers have been very useful. Videos were helpful. Those were on our website as well. We've received some good comments about that. On the screen, you'll see the Census Bureau Customer Service number, and we also have the 2020census.gov as a link that you can go to to respond online. You may also respond by phone or email. There will be reminders from the federal government. You can respond using your computer again, laptop, smartphone, tablet, or again, by phone or mail. That December 31st deadline that the federal government had as a deadline to report to the president remains on target, as does the April 2021 deadline for delivery to the states. There may be some other deadlines that are adjusted, but to the general public, that will be relatively seamless.
Carrie, just a moment. John Coaches, are you still on the line?
Yes, sir.
Did you make Larry Hannah aware of the fact that I cannot take his call right now?
Oh, yes, I will do that.
Thank you. Carrie, please continue.
So there was some flooding from the storm on March 19th, and the northwestern portion of the county was, was hit by some storms and flooding. Utilities worked very hard to help some customers. Dog Adoption Center and Shelter is ready to support Licking County, and they suffered some more flooding than Fairfield County did. EMA sent some boat teams, a boat and three individuals, to help Licking County for some rescues. And the Tusing Road Government Services Center was flooded. The good news is, most of those floors are hard floors or tile floors, and there's some carpet damage, but it's expected to be relatively minor, and most of this has been cleaned up. That particular building is used for scheduled appointments only, so there isn't a lot of electronics in that building. So the damage, while it's expected to be minor, we will be responding to that. And we, again, are thankful to utilities for working hard to address the community concerns about flooding during the rains.
Carrie, just a moment. Commissioner Fix, is that area where the Tusing Road facility is, is that generally subject to flooding, or is that an unusual event in that area?
It, it's pretty unusual. There's a, you know, it's right down by the creek, and it sits a little low. That office building, to my knowledge, has not been flooded before, so I would say it's a pretty unusual occurrence. We did get, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this or not, but we got a shit ton of rain all at once, and it, I mean, it, everything was underwater for a little bit.
All right. Thank you for the very colorful commentary.
You're welcome.
Back to you, Carrie.
So we're on to a budget update, and we know that the pandemic will have an impact, and we're certain of that. But what we're uncertain about is the magnitude of that impact. We did send communication to elected officials and department heads, and that's in your review packet. We asked everyone to restrict new hires to those that are needed just for the emergency, to delay an expenditure if it can be delayed, and to use extra caution with appropriations. We want to focus on the needs of the emergency and the current operations in the coming days. We know that for the first quarter of 2020, collections of sales tax revenues are about 6.2 million. That's about 6% more than the previous year's quarter, and that does give us some small protection for the future in terms of that revenue item. With casino revenues.
Carrie?
Mm-hmm.
Carrie?
Yes.
We can stay on sales tax revenue for a minute. I just think it's helpful for everybody to remember, what is it, about approximately a three-month lag on those numbers?
Yes, approximately.
Yeah, so I just, I just don't want people to think that we're seeing an increase in sales tax during the pandemic. We're seeing an increase in sales tax that precedes the pandemic, and we have not yet seen any numbers reflective of our time during the pandemic.
That is correct.
Please continue.
With casino revenues, we do expect a decline in revenues due to the closing of the casinos. And just as with sales tax, there is a delay in the receipt of those and the impact of the pandemic itself. If the casinos do not open again until October, collections will fall about 961,000 below the estimate for 2020. So the next receipt we will get will be for about a two-month period, and we'll receive those in May, and they will include February and March. January, February.
Okay, thank you.
January, February, and March. Our current interest income estimate is now about 663,000 below last year's interest income estimate. So we've prepared our initial.
Carrie, staying on revenue for a minute, are those the three primary revenue sources that we should concern ourselves with as a result of the pandemic? Sales tax, casino revenue, and interest income? Or is there another revenue stream of imports that we should also be concerning ourselves with at this point?
I think all streams will be impacted. For example, property tax has been collected for the first half of 2020, but not the second half. And certainly, there will be more delinquencies for property tax than there would normally have been, just based upon people's income levels.
Understood. Thank you.
So we prepared a communication for that first-level budget entry for 2021, and that relates to the parameters being flat in all categories, with the exception of insurance, for which there's a 2% increase anticipated. This is just for that Level 1 process, and the letter is within the review packet for your review. It is to go out to elected officials and department heads early in April.
To stay on that Level 1 communication, I agree with the content. Commissioner Fix, any questions on Level 1 communication?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Levitsy, questions or concerns on the Level 1 communication?
Well, I think everything's going well. If I can make one comment regarding the census, there, there are people, and I've talked to several, who have not received anything from the U.S. Census Bureau. And so Carrie and I had a conversation about that, and I think it's important that we, you know, we highlight who they can contact if they, if they haven't received that communication.
Agreed, and I know that is being advertised, and we're, we're using the channels that we do have to get that information out. Thank you, Commissioner. Back to you, Carrie.
And we've mentioned already the refunding and consolidation of the debt resolutions, and proceeding with these resolutions, of course, does not require action. Regarding some previous reports of the city of Lancaster and the county joining efforts in a partnership for the CHIP and Home partnership relating to those particular grant funds, we originally thought that there might be some increased opportunity for some funding for Lancaster, but they do have entitlement status with that particular grant, so there won't be any increased funding, but we are open to that partnership if it's helpful in any way. And as we think about BRAVs.
Carrie, what?
Mm-hmm, go ahead. Yes, sorry.
Go ahead.
As we think about.
Right.
Mm-hmm. As we think about BRAVs, we want to say thank you to everyone for their extremely cooperative spirit during this very challenging time. It's a time to encourage one another and offer support, and while things may not be perfect, we're very happy with how everybody's working together. And congratulations to John Slater Jr. and all of the team for earning the GFOA Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the year ended December 31st, 2018. We did send a note of congratulations to share that encouraging spirit, and thanks to all the department for their support with financial reporting.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions, comments, or concerns from Commissioner Levitsy at this point?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Commissioner Fix?
No, sir. Thank you.
Carrie, on the agenda, are we, are we to new business?
Yes, old, new, correspondence and invitations, yes.
All right. Is there, I, I, what do we have under old business? Anything at this point?
Nothing at this point in any of those categories.
All right. Is, is Jeff Barron still in the room?
He is.
And can he hear us?
Yes, he can, yes. He's going to come a little closer.
Yeah, I just want to, given the very unique conduct of the meeting, I wanted to see if he had any questions or anything he wanted to ask the commission about at this point in time.
I just want to know, is the positive test confirmed yet? Can I go?
Can I go ahead and report there has been a positive case?
In case you couldn't hear that, Jeff was asking if the positive case has been confirmed. And that was the one in which the Department of Health was going to issue a press release.
Yeah, I understand. And Jeff, I have a voicemail, I can tell, on my phone from Larry Hannah. I believe that could be the only reason he would be calling me. But we need to defer to the Department of Health for confirmation of a positive test.
Hey, Steve, can I jump in? It's John.
Yes, John Coaches.
They, I just talked with Larry. That press release should be within the next 10 minutes. And what he was calling about wasn't actually directly related to that positive, but I did take care of the issue he was calling about, I think, so. You'll see when you, and your actual voicemail.
All right. So Jeff, that's, and Jeff Barron, I think you have Larry Hannah's cell phone number, correct?
I do, yes.
All right, so we would, we would just have to defer to confirmation on that, okay?
Okay.
All right, so we're back under new business or old business. Is there any issue or item that anybody would like to bring to the attention of the Commission under either old or new business? Hearing none. What do we have left on the agenda, Carrie?
We have some quick FYIs. Jail population is down to 216. That's down 39 from last week. We're especially grateful to the prosecutor, to the courts, to probation officers, to the sheriff's staff, everybody who's working very hard to manage that appropriately, to have as low a population as possible. We say thank you to Community Action for their opportunity with the recycling program. And they say thank you to Commissioner Davis for judging the poster contest for the recycling. We have the GFOA letter for the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, for which we just issued a Bravo for John Slater and his team. And thank you from the Beards at Drew Shue. We've also sent them a thank you for our past relationship. Since we have the Record Center, we are no longer renting a space there, but they spent a effort to give us some encouragement about how much they appreciated having that relationship in the past.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there anything additional on the review agenda at this point?
We will put the slideshow in the minutes on the website as well. And we will have that available. And we're available for any questions at any time. And we have virtual cookies for our virtual meeting, because we're really missing the Levitsy cookies, and that's why we have the virtual cookies up there. It's good to keep a sense of humor from time to time as well.
No, I understand. And I know it's a very difficult time for everybody. And I'm getting to enjoy the difficulties along with everybody else. Any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring up during review? Hearing none, we'll move on to the regular voting pattern in the absence of objections. We are now in the voting pattern. And in lieu of our standard opening of the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that we all observe a moment of silence for those throughout our country and the world who are currently experiencing the effects of this pandemic. Thank you. Rachel, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
At this time, we would normally allow an opportunity for voters or taxpayers to address the Commission. Under the circumstances, that is not possible. But I do want to inquire of staff as to whether we have received any email questions during the course of this meeting.
We just double-checked, do we have none?
Thank you. Please move on to the approval minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, March 17th, 2020?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
First items from the Commissioners, Resolution 2020-3.24.A. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in a major object expense category for General Fund 1001. And a fund-to-fund transfer from General Fund 1001 to Workforce 7831.
The Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K.
This is Levitsy. I second that.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Next items from the Dog Shelter, Resolution 2020-3.24.L. A resolution to reduce appropriations and appropriate from unappropriated funds in a major expense object.
I move.
Levitsy, second.
Discussion?
This particular resolution is a result of restructuring, and we commend the Dog Shelter for taking this step to reduce appropriations.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Next items from Economic Development, Resolution 2020-3.24.M. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated funds in a major category expense.
For Economic Development, I move items M and N.
This is Levitsy. I'll second that.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Next items from the Engineer, Resolution 2020-3.24.O. A resolution to approve the ODOT Road Salt Contract for 2020.
Under Engineer, I move items O, P, and Q.
This is Levitsy. I'll second that.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Next items from Major Crimes Unit, Resolution 2020-3.24.S. A resolution to authorize the Fairfield County Commissioners to sign the Fairfield-Hocking-Athens Major Crime Unit Subgrant Award Agreement.
Under Major Crimes Unit, I move items S and T.
This is Levitsy. I'll second that.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
We'll go back to Family, Adult, and Children First Council, Resolution 2020-3.24.R. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated funds in a major category expense for Fund 7521.
I move.
This is Levitsy. Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Next items from JFS, Resolution 2020-3.24.U. A resolution to approve a memo, receipt, and expenditure for Fairfield County Job and Family Services Fund 2015, reimbursing Fund 2018.
Under JFS, I move items U, V, W, X, Y, Z, A, A, and B, B.
This is Levitsy. I'll second that.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Next items from the Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2020-3.24.C. A resolution authorizing the contract to Cooper Concrete Services LLC. Notice and notice of commencement for the Village of Pleasantville fiscal year 2018 CDBG Main Street Improvement Project.
I move.
This is Levitsy. Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Last item is the Payment of Bills, Resolution 2020-3.24.D. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners' approval.
I move.
This is Levitsy. Second.
Discussion?
For those of you who may not be able to see this, this is a payment of $51,979.75 for the Center for Disabilities for Transportation.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
This is Levitsy. Second.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, immediately following the review meeting at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you. Just a few things I want to go through here, given the unique nature of this meeting. Is Jeff Barron still in the room?
Yes.
Jeff, is there, do you have any additional questions of the Commission at this time?
No, I don't. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. John Coaches, any additional information?
No.
Carrie, anything additional?
No, sir.
Commissioner Fix?
I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Levitsy?
I'd just like to say, you know, I think our staff, you had mentioned earlier, has done a terrific job, especially with the leadership of Carrie. And I would like to say if anyone needs my help in any way, I'm available.
Well, thank you. And on behalf of the Commissioners, I so very much appreciate the work that Carrie and all of our staff are doing during this difficult time. I will just tell you personally that it is incredibly difficult for me to participate in a meeting this way. I don't want to do meetings this way. I look forward to our return to the regular order of business, hopefully in the near future. As folks know, I'm available anytime, day or night, by cell phone. And I look forward to working with everybody in person as soon as the pandemic and the governor will allow. Is there any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring to the attention of the Commission at this time?
I think we should say thank you to Interface...
Hearing none. Before, I'm sorry?
I think it would be a good idea for us to say thank you to Interface Video for helping us stream these meetings.
Yeah, curious on that. Has anybody been monitoring that?
Can you tell how many people we've had view?
He's checking now.
I just wondered if we had any confirmation that it worked.
Oh, it worked, for sure. I had it pulled up on my computer, so there's at least one.
I can see it on my phone.
I had it on my computer, see if it works. It seems like there's a delay between the video and our conversation on the phone. Is that accurate?
Yes, there was a delay. That's expected, correct? Yep.
I don't know if you heard, there were 64 viewers.
Wow. Oh, okay. A little more popular than they are in reality. Yeah, so I want to be a little bit, I want to be a little bit careful with any motion at this point until we are absolutely certain that everything we need to do has been done and that there is no other issue that the Commission needs to take under consideration at this time. So I'm going to ask you, Carrie, is there any issue or concern before any dispositive motion would be made?
No, sir.
I'll accept a motion. Motion to adjourn dispositively.
I'll second that motion. This is Levitsy.
Got a motion to adjourn and a second. All goes fast through that. Roll call.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levitsy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. We thank everybody who could participate for participating. And we would advise the public that we look forward, very much so, to returning to the regular order of business. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.